Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for March 7, 2022. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, Ms. Councilmember Wilkerson may be delayed. But go ahead.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
President.
Councilmember Kinnear.
President.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmembers of Bone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Wilkerson is absent at this time.
All right, well, City Administrator Johnny Perkins, why don't you take it away on the advanced agenda?
Actually, Council President, we have sent an email saying that Mr. Perkins' minor might not have been, be available today, so I'm, I'm going to take it today.
All right.
I know you thought you were, I know you thought you were done with me, but I'm back.
I think it's not fair. He gave you the longest consent agenda ever, so good luck.
Yes, it's penance for something, I'm sure. So, thank you, Council President and members of the council. On the consent agenda for next week's meeting, we have a number of proposed reports, contracts, and claims. First, we have two five-year blankets that impact water, and Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to present those items.
Good afternoon, council members. Item number one is a five-year value blanket with consolidated supply for purchase of coil set meter boxes. This is expected annual spend of $600,000. And item number two is a five-year value blanket with Core and Main with an expected annual spend, or sorry, that's for ductile iron tapping salads. And the annual spend for that would be $80,000 a year.
Any questions for Lauren? Thank you, Lauren. Next, we have a proposed five-year blanket for the purchase of sewer bins, and Raylene Jeanette from the Sewer Department is here to present that item. Raylene.
Yes.
We can't hear you, Raylene. Or I can't. I just barely, I can just barely hear you.
Yeah, a little bit better. The volume's just really low for us coming through.
I'll try to speak up a little louder. How's that?
Yep, that's better.
Better.
Okay, this is for a five-year value blanket with Spokane Ten for $225,000. And these sewer bins are for, to help keep floatable out of the sewer system and the storm system as well as the river. So, thank you.
Thanks, Raylene. Next is the proposed purchase of a tractor, and Rick Giddings, our manager of Fleet Services, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Armsby. Good afternoon, council members. The wastewater treatment plant would like to purchase a John Deere 8R 250 tractor from Pape Machinery in Spokane using Sourcewell contract 110719-JDC to replace the unit that's reached the end of its economic life. Cost of the tractor will be $198,291.88 after applying an $84,000 trade-in for the unit that's being replaced. The tractor is diesel-powered and will be in line with our clean fuel goals once renewable diesel is available. Funding is included in the treatment plant's budget.
Any questions for Rick? Thank you, Rick. The next three items relate to streets, and Clint Harris, our Director of Streets, is here to present those items. Clint.
Good afternoon, council members. The Street Department is requesting renewal of an expiring value blanket for the purchases up to 1.5 million in liquid de-icer using state contract 02714. Any questions? Okay, I'll move on to number five. And the Street Department is seeking approval for the purchase of traffic paint in an amount not to exceed $95,000 utilizing approved state Washington contract, or a Spokane County contract, or is another alternative Pierce County contract via local, inter-local agreement 995-0065. And this is all for purchasing traffic paint.
I have a question on that, Mr. Harris. It's Lori. Does that meet the eligibility or the requirements for no or low PCBs?
It is the low PCB paint. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and then item number six, the Street Department is seeking approval to renewable value blanket contract with Valmont Industries for an amount not to exceed[591.88][591.89]$380,000 to be used for the ordering of traffic signal and luminaire standards. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Armsby.
Yep, thank you, Clint. The next five items relate to either the waste-to-energy plant or groundwater monitoring, and David Payne from the Waste Energy Staff is here to present these items. David.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. The first item is for the purchase of a new lime slaker with heaters for the waste energy facility. A lime slaker takes hydrated lime, adds water, turns it into a slurry, which is sprayed into the flue gas process of a boiler. This, these particulates are just sprayed in, attached to various chemicals and components, and drop them out of the flue gas. We're replacing one of two. We have a primary and a backup. This cost is not to exceed $94,100 plus tax. The second item is for renewal of one of three with Helprich Brothers Boiler Works of Lawrence, Massachusetts for boiler services at the waste energy plant from April 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2023, with a cost not to exceed $1 million. Helprich Brothers Boiler Works supports us with our tube maintenance and boiler proper maintenance throughout the year. The next item is a renewal of one of four with Sulzer Pump of Santa Fe Springs, California, for repairs of our feedwater pumps and related feedwater pump services. This contract runs from March 15th, 2022 to March 14th, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $100,000 plus tax. The next item is with Brands Safeway Services LLC of Spokane, Washington, for scaffolding services. Scaffolding services are used throughout the facility to support boiler maintenance. This contract runs from March 31st, 2023, or I'm sorry, April 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2023, with a total not to exceed amount of $700,000 including taxes. The last one is a three-year contact with Jacobs Engineering Group, Spokane, Washington, for landfill groundwater monitoring, data analysis, and report writing from March 10th, 2022 through March 9th, 2025, with a total cost not to exceed $150,000 plus tax. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Now, we move to a proposed contract amendment with one of our geotech engineering firms, and Dan Bowler from our engineering department is here to present this item. Dan.
Good afternoon. Adam Twalos, the proposed contract amount increase for on-call engineering contract with Budinger and Associates of Spokane. The funds expended under this contract are reimbursed by various public works project and were requested an increase of $400,000.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Dan. Now, we move next to a proposed contract for investment services. Antonia Wallace, our Chief Financial Officer, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, city council members. This is a deferred item that was deferred two weeks ago from last week, pending updated information from a temp seasonal employee opportunity. But I do not have an update for you at this time. I have not had any information come back to me on that. But as I have told the council, I will ensure that there are no overlapping in duties or responsibilities. This would be separate services.
Antonia, it's Brian. Any reports on when we're expecting the report from the contract employee and what their proposed scope of work is when we're going to get that report?
I was actually expecting something back by last Friday, but I did not hear anything back, so I'll be following up early this week to get, to try to get something.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Council President.
Yes.
Should we defer this until Tanya has more information for us?
Could you say that again? I missed what you said.
Could we, should we defer this until Tanya has more information for us?
I would second that.
Okay, that's a motion and a second. Do you want to make it indefinitely, or do you want to do a date certain?
I would like, let's do two weeks. By then, she should have something for us.
All right, so.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Can I make that date certain March 21st?
Okay.
That is two weeks.
All right, all right. So, the motion is to defer till March 21st? And you accept that as a second, Ms. Stratton, or Councilmember Stratton?
Yes.
Any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just clarity around what exactly is it that we're waiting on before we, we vote on this?
Yeah, so when we budgeted the money for this, we budgeted for this function to be accomplished by a project employee or a contract employee who formerly worked for the city. And the administration has retained that employee as well for some other duties, and so we're waiting for a report from that potential employee to tell us what they can and can't do. So, we're just waiting. Otherwise, it's two different expense items, so we're trying to keep it into, potentially into one, one item. All right.
Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor of deferring until March 21st indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions?
Nay.
Okay, one nay. Any abstentions? All right, so matter passed of six to one. That's deferred to March 21st. Continue on.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have two items related to the Burn J Grant that we received, and Eric Olson, one of our Police Department majors, is here to present both of those items. These also relate to a special budget ordinance that is, that would come up later in the meeting, so all three of these items are related. So, after Major Olson's presentation, if you have any questions on any of those three items, please feel free to raise them. Eric.
Thank you, Ms. Armsby. Good afternoon, council members. Thanks for letting me present. I actually, as Ms. Armsby said, this is related to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant of the JAG grant from 2021. We're looking for acceptance of the grant as one item. That is item ending in 017, 0170, and then 0171 is actually a sub award. So, we actually are the grantors, or grantees, and then we sub recipients give to the county their share. So, this is a total grant is $176,381. The county would receive $79,371 of it. The balance is ours. And then the third item is that SBO that would allow the budget to be adjusted to allow for those figures. Are there any questions on any of these three items?
Okay.
Thank you.
Not seeing any. Thank you, Eric. Next, we move to the next two items, which relate to PEG programming related to the Cox Cable, I say Cox Cable, that dates me, the Comcast Cable franchise agreement. And John Delay, who runs the TV operations for the city, is here to present these items. Go ahead, John. Thanks.
Good afternoon, council. Mike, that dates you back about three franchises ago. The first item before you is the annual contract with KSPS, designated them as the PEG channel distribution manager. PEG, for those of you who are new on the council, is the Public Education and Government Access Programming. KSPS provides the cable feed and distribution for the public and education channels. This contract will reimburse KSPS for capital costs associated with the distribution of those signals, and this utilizes the PEG fees associated with cable bills. The second item is another annual contract with community-minded enterprises for the operation and management of CMTV, the Community Access Channel. This again reimburses CME for capital costs associated with providing public access channel services to the public. Both of these contracts allow us to fulfill Section 19 of the Cable Franchise Agreement with Comcast, which addresses PEG channels. I might add that there's another minor contract, about 2,200 bucks, with the Spokane Public School District that provides them with capital reimbursement as well. That's Channel 17. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, John. The next item is a proposed contract amendment with a personnel firm to provide administrative support relative to the ARPA program, and Michelle Murray, our Director of Accounting Services, is here to present this item. Michelle.
Hi, good afternoon, council. This, this is bringing forth a contract amendment with Robert Half, Robert Half Professional Services, so that we can contract out administrative assistant work, grant, citywide grant work, and grants of help with the ARPA grant, so administrative for our ARPA grant. And this is a temporary, temporary placement in lieu of the recruiting going on for permanent hires. So, we will be doing recruitment for grant administrators and for the administrative assistant as well. And it's for not to exceed $160,000 for adding to the contract.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just curious, what, what portion of their job is ARPA-related? Like, what percentage?
One, one of them is 100%. She's solely working on the ARPA. We were given up 305,000 administrative support for ARPA funds, and she's solely doing the ARPA and attending the ARPA meetings.
So, I get, my, my question would be, why do we need a permanent person to do ARPA, which is a temporary program?
Well, this particular person that's with contract, that is contract for the ARPA, we are recruiting for two permanent grant positions. One will be citywide grants, and then one will be grants to help with the CHHS grants and support.
They're going to do ARPA for now, but eventually their portfolio would expand?
No.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
The next four items relate to IT, and Mike Sloan, our IT Director, is here to present those items. Go to it, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Armsby. Good afternoon, city council. All four of these items will be falling under the category of maintenance renewal. So, item 19 is contract renewal with Azteca Systems LLC for the amount of $135,160, and that's in support of our city work asset management system. And it, there's a minimal increase. It's, it's less than a few hundred dollars. So, able to renew at that, so asking your approval for that. No questions. Item 20 is contract renewal. It's one of two with Encapsulate LLC for the city's customer relationship management system, CRM. There's a slight decrease in this contract. We're asking approval for, for $113,118.94. Item 21 is a contract renewal for Carisoft Technologies Corporation for the purchase of sales force CRM license in support of Spokane 311's the backend for it, and that's a hosted environment. We're asking your approval for $121,516.75. That's roughly a $6,000 increase from the last approved contract, and that's because we've added a license, a user license for that contract. And then item 22 is again a maintenance for Oracle license port to include subscription services for PeopleSoft, our, our human capital management system, and our current UIS utility billing system. There is an increase there, roughly $8,000, and that's the contract that we established with Oracle, and that's a 4% annual increase as negotiated. Any questions on any of those items? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. The next item is a proposed contract amendment from City Legal for one of our outside legal counsel firms for additional work that needs to be done on a case where the firm is representing the Spokane Police Department and a number of our officers in a wrongful death case. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Okay, and the next item is an additional reallocation of a grant award, and Jen Sarocides from CHHS is here to present this item. I hope. Thought I saw her.
She had an appointment, and she was supposed, she thought she'd be here.
If not, Mike, I can brief it.
Okay, please do.
So, these were some funds from our rental assistance that was not utilized by Family Promise. They came back to us, and they are being redistributed to Gecko to get those last ones out. They were very effective, and we thought we would just put it to them. I mean, it is a lot of money, but it's not significant in respect to the millions that we have gone out the door. So, the final, just to do, the final distribution of rental assistance funds.
Councilman Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering why the retroactive to March 1. Is that because of the, the eviction moratorium?
I believe so, Councilmember Cathcart, but I would really have to ask Jen to weigh in on that particular point.
Yeah, we, we can check on it. That, it's okay.
I'd have some pretty substantive questions around the legal issues of that. So, if, Mike, if you have any follow-up, I'd certainly appreciate it.
No, we can do that. It's, it's not uncommon on something where time is of the essence, and the, the department has a process they can use with federal funds, of which these were, and that they can go through and, and go ahead and do a selection process and allocate the money to another grant recipient, and so that we don't have to wait to come to the council as long as it's money that's already been approved. The process allows for that to happen. I don't know if that's what happened here, but I'll go, I'll go back and check.
Jen, Jen is, is on, actually on the call now.
Okay.
Yeah, she popped in. So, Jen, if you're out there?
Hi, this is Jen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Sorry, I was like, I was on my phone, and I could not unmute. It was like not letting me talk. And I'm sorry, as I was trying to get there, I heard there was a question, and I, can somebody repeat what that question was?
Right, Councilman Cathcart asked the question of, this is the, the, a reallocation is retroactive back to the beginning of March, and he just wanted to make sure that was okay. And I, I'm not exactly sure why, what the reallocation process was, so I think if you can handle that, that would probably answer his question.
Yeah, so, these funds are actually part of what we use to calculate the, the number of applications that LifeStory could take before we had to shut down the portal. So, we received notice of these funds prior to that date. We just didn't have the contract for it. And so, when we were trying to decide, should we close down that portal, it was based on including this amount in that total rental assistance pool for how long we were going to keep the applications open for before we completely closed it, if that makes sense.
So, just, just, just to follow up then, we, we've been accepting applications as though this money was in the bank?
We have been accepting applications based on the amount of money that we believe that we were going to be allocated, and that's been kind of how this program, my understanding is how it's operated the whole time. So, we actually, we get authorized an award, and then we have to do a certain amount of drawdown before we can get additional pieces of award. So, it is allocated to us, but we can't always access it until we go through the proper channel.
So, I guess, I guess my concern is, you know, we, the, we, we put in place the kind of quasi eviction moratorium, and we said that it wouldn't be implemented if we ran out of money. And so, I guess where I'm going is, if we at one point officially ran out of funds, we were no longer able to, you know, mandate that in moratorium, setting this as a retroactive date if there's been legal action since then and the costs associated with that. I, I'm just really curious about the legal implications on, on landlords if we do a retroactive date on this. So, that's my legal concern.
Yeah, and so, these were people that were already, had already applied, and I believe that the application date is the date that kind of impacts that, that legal issue. And I'm not a lawyer, so, sorry, Mike, I'm speaking out of school.
Go ahead.
But my, my understanding is, is that because they had already applied, that application is good. But, and we, what we wanted to do was, we wanted to prevent people from continuing to apply for funds that we didn't have. I don't know if that's, if I'm answering your question.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'm, I'll follow up offline as well.
Okay.
Get more detail. Thank you.
Jen, maybe some clarity, when did the port, the portal is closed, right, and has been closed for a while?
The portal is closed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we are still actively processing applications. So, they had such a huge volume of applications that, that we, we closed sooner. We still have money in our bank that they're billing us for because they had so many applications lined up.
But this, this reallocation did not reopen the portal, so it was closed and it was not available.
No, no, it was included, yeah, no, it was included in the original projection.
Okay, and then my next question is.
So, Jen, is this money that went to one provider, and the one provider didn't have enough applications to cover it, so now it's going to another provider to cover the applications that they had accepted but didn't have money for? that they had accepted but didn't have money for?
No, no. So it's all going to Live Stories, and when we were originally looking at shutting down the portal, so they're able to do a projection of how much they think they're going to spend per person based on the applications that are coming through. And they, this money was included in that. Our recommendation was it goes to them because they were already spending the bulk of the money.
I think Councilwoman Wilkerson has a question.
So I will just say for clarity that CHHS actually voted on the allocation of this residual money to go to Live Stories. So that's really how it ended. I thought it had been some funds left over from another organization that had not dispersed all theirs, but that's not true. It was, went through the CHHS process and board.
And, and it actually is a reallocation from another area in the state. So it was not from our area. It was a reallocation from another area in the state that did not spend their funds and then came to us. So it wasn't reallocated from one of our agencies, but technically was a reallocation.
Thank you, Jen.
One more follow-up, since we have you here. How much money, if we were to find some more money from ARPA or some other place, from the state, how much money do you think we would need to find before we did reopen the portal so people could apply who need rent assistance, who can't currently apply?
So there's actually potentially some money coming through Department of Commerce. I think we're looking, I'm looking at my notes, and I apologize, we, Kelsey Martin, who works previously doing this, left, I think, two weeks ago, so I have been managing through it. But we are looking at some additional funds through Live Stories. I would have to put together some numbers to tell you how long that money is going to go, and what's the approximate average per person, and kind of what that need is. But I'm glad to do that.
Thanks, Janet. And Michael, please feel free to call up, to follow up with either of us after this if, if we still haven't cleared everything up. Any other questions for Jen? Thanks, Jen, for being here. The, the next item is the financial obligations of the city. The first is claims and payments that will be, the, the section will be completed before next week's meeting. And then it also will include payroll claims through this next Friday, and that section will be filled in as well. And then there is a placeholder in the agenda for city council meeting minutes, and that will be completed prior to next week's meeting. That concludes the consent agenda, but we'll now move to the legislative agenda. The first item is the, is special ordinances, and the first special ordinance is one that was related to the two contract items that Major Olson discussed earlier. And next, we have some general fund SBO adjustments. And Paul and Josie from our budget office is here to cover those items.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, city council. This SBO is found on PDF page 412 of your packet. It's an interfund budget transfer from budgeted personnel expenses to non-personnel expenses. It covers three departments in two different funds, the Finance Department, the Grants Management Department, and the General Fund, and the Accounting Department, and the Accounting Internal Service Fund. We're taking salary savings from vacant positions and moving it to contractual services for some temporary staffing help while we get those other positions recruited and try to bring in some permanent staff. And happy to take any questions.
Not seen any, Paul. Thank you.
Karen, I have a quick question.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. So, but we are going to hire a Director of Grants, correct? That's coming up, the Director of Grants and Contracts?
I'm just checking to see if Tanya's still on the call, but I believe that is-
I think she is. I just want to say, I thought that's what was said earlier, was that we are going to hire those two permanent positions, correct?
We do have two permanent grants analyst positions, one, which is the next SBO that you see is a transfer of a position from CHHS into, under the grants umbrella. That will still be a fully dedicated position for CHHS grants. And then the other vacant position is we're reclassifying a position within the grants group to be another administrator, which will help support those citywide grants. But yes, they're both vacant, and yes, we are planning on filling, filling them as permanent positions.
And you'll have the funds to do that, correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Any other questions? And Tanya's answer to Councilwoman Stratton's question kind of segues into the next item on the agenda, and that is the SBO relating to those positions. So, Tanya?
Yes, council members. So that is a, an SBO to take one position from one department and move it into another department under the grants management, so that really that is a cohesive citywide team. There is no net impact to the general fund. It's just really a change in management and where, where they're placed.
Any additional questions for Tanya? Okay, next, we have an SBO relating to the general fund and the 10 police officer positions. And Jackie McConnell, Director in the Police Department, is here to present this item. Jackie?
Yeah, good afternoon, council. So this would basically be for 10 police officer positions for the Spokane Police Department. That would be essentially hire ahead positions, and would ideally be used so that it would reduce the amount of time from when somebody leaves to when we would hire somebody to fill their spot, which would inevitably, ideally lead to increased staffing for the Spokane Police Department. And there would be no, although this would come from the general fund, there would be no overall change to the general fund and that appropriation.
Any questions for Jackie? Thank you. Next, we, there are no emergency ordinances proposed, but there is a resolution regarding the distribution of investment incomes and income, excuse me, and Tony Wallace is still with us to present that item. And, and Tanya, when you finish with that, you've got the only first reading ordinance as well, so feel free to, to move into that when you're done with this.
All right, thank you. Yes, council members, so you have a resolution in front of you that we discussed at the Finance Administration Committee about standardizing how investment earnings are allocated. As we, as we discussed, interest is allocated among grants, bonds, and those restricted funds on, on what has been earned, and is apportioned proportionally. This also just takes those other funds that are not restricted, not funds, not bonds or grants, and says we do it on the same basis of whatever is earned that month is proportionally allocated. The other added element into this is that the funds have to have had an average annual investment balance of $2.5 million. This just prevents the allocation of 7 cents or 80 cents, very small amounts, that take about three to four hours a month in terms of calculating for this special allocation. So this just standardizes it and cleans that up.
Tanya, bring in-
Council President?
Yeah. Could you tell, I get how much time it takes every month. How, what's the amount of money on average that would, the delta be on this? What's the amount that's going to go into the general?
Less than $50,000 annually.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Wilkerson?
Thank you. And I am the sponsor of this resolution. But, Tanya, there is still some confusion over understanding this, so I am going to request a one-week deferral or possibly a study session. It was, just kind of came out the blue, and I've had quite a few questions from some other council members. So I'd like at least a one-week deferral on this, possibly two.
Could I suggest that you put it to the same 21st, motion for the 21st as the other, it's kind of related?
Up to the 21st, that's, that's finance-related day, so March 21st, please.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm also a sponsor, and I wanted to check with Tanya, just make sure there'd be no issues with that.
Really, no issues at all. I would just ask that we do get it scheduled so we can get the questions answered at, at a study session. So I, I'm sure Council President begs, I'd appreciate your support and your assistance with that.
Yeah. Well, I, I think it might be a Finance Committee meeting instead on that day, because we don't have any study session time then, but Finance Committee.
That was my intention, Tanya. Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this matter till March 21st, and having it also considered at the Finance Committee meeting that day, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred.
Okay. The next item, council members, is an ordinance that really addresses the organization of the city. Specifically, it talks about moving the internal auditor to Management and Budget Department, and then Accounting. It now recognizes the Grant Management under Accounting, so we've added that. And then finally, taking the Grants, Contracts, and Purchasing Department, and really reframing that to Contracts and Purchasing Department, which is in more alignment with standard city organizations. Any questions there?
No, but I was informed by Clerk Fister that the version that was filed had a blank in it. We have a new one that doesn't have the blank, and it's been circulated, so I'm looking for a motion to substitute.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of substituting the version that was circulated in the last few minutes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. I do have just one request, Mr. Ormsby, on this, and then we have this other potential ordinance on reorganizing the Police Department. I know there's some language, I can't remember if it's in the code or the charter, that these organizational ordinances have to be at the budget meeting at the end of the year. And I know this came up a couple of years ago when we did one in the beginning of the year, but I'm just wondering, not today, you don't have to, but when we come back to this, if you could just be prepared to explain to us why we can do it despite that language?
Right. And I, I think, Council President, we have a memo that Mike Picklework on that was, that we can dust off, and I can pull it up, and then we can circulate it to everyone. Happy to do that.
Great, thank you. All right, that's the end of the advanced agenda. All those in favor of approving the advanced agenda as modified, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. And looking at tonight's agenda, before we get to consent, I don't believe I heard or saw any requests for changes. Last call for that. All right, then Ms. Fister, you can read the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from H.D. Fowler, Spokane Valley, Washington, of five additional Megalug fittings in support of the Cochrane Basin Project, $87,625. Number two, agreement with Spokane County in conjunction with the Mental Health Field Response Team fiscal year 2021 grant program to provide funding towards six Spokane Police Department employees for the continued operation of the region's mental health field response team, up to $833,433 revenue. Number three, one-year contract extension with ECOVA Solutions, Salt Lake City, Utah, for subscription to ClientTrack software that supports the city's homeless management information system for the CHHS Department from December 1, 2021, through November 30, 2022, $137,733.17, including tax. Number four, one-year contract renewal with Highland Software Incorporated, Westlake, Ohio, for annual software maintenance and support for the city's on-base document imaging system from April 1, 2022, through March 31, 2023, $68,041.67, including tax. Number five, master consultant agreement with Infinite Innovations, Hayden, Idaho, for technical services in support of PMO and ITSD projects in the areas of project management, business analysis, software development, and infrastructure support from February 1, 2022, through January 31, 2024, $150,000 per year. Number six, contract amendment with Solzer's Pump Services, Santa Fe Springs, California, for the rebuild of a boiler feed water pump at the waste energy facility, at a cost much higher than anticipated, $50,000. Contract total, $150,000, including tax. Number seven, report to the mayor of pending claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through February 25, 2022. Total $10,299,610.17 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $9,953,977.66. Number eight, city council meeting minutes for February 14 and February 24, 2022.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved, and we don't have an executive session, so that will do it for the briefing session today. We'll see everyone at 6 o'clock. We're going to get reports from the Office of Police Ombudsman and their commission, as well as proclamation and salutation. We'll see you then. We're adjourned.